Welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Charter Township of Washington Board of Trustees. Tonight I have a special guest, Kelly Lovati, who's from the Macomb County Chamber of Commerce. She'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll all stand and please join us with her as we do the pledge.
Thank you Supervisor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since you're up there, if you'd like to maybe tell the board or the public things that you're working on, of course, the state of the town.
Yeah, actually, just to be brief, I just wanted to give everybody a little update. My name is Kelly Lovati, I'm the CEO and President for the Macomb County Chamber. The Macomb County Chamber is based in Mount Clemens, if you don't know that. We're a leading voice for businesses throughout Macomb County. We support our members through networking events, business development, and community engagement. And our motto is a greater voice, greater connections, and greater values. We've actually been around since 1892, that's when we were founded. And we play a vital role in economic development, advocating for issues, and serving as a catalyst for growth. Our members benefit for being a part of the Chamber through professional development, seminars, member-to-member discounts, and a variety of signature events that we do, including an Athena Award, which honors people who have been successful in their careers and who have promoted women throughout theirs. We have a new young professional event for 40 under 40. And then we have a Hall of Fame where we look at businesses, individuals, and families who have given their time, talent, and treasures to Macomb County. So we like to celebrate them. A couple of special things that we do, we have some specialized committees, aerospace and defense, the blue economy, and public policy, where we offer our members this platform to advocate on issues again for the region, some of those most pressing issues that we can bring to the forefront, to our legislators, to our municipalities, and to represent those businesses. We have a full calendar of events that you can find at our website, and we really look forward to serving all the businesses throughout the entire Macomb County.
Thank you.
Thank you Kelly.
I guess August 15th will be hosting.
I should have mentioned that one, I apologize. Jack Frost Museum.
Yeah, so I'm happy that they'll be sponsoring this event, hosting the event, sorry. Okay, thank you for coming. Clerk Brown, please do roll call.
Supervisor Pravidi.
How's it?
Nicely.
Here.
Chaplin.
Here.
Mylum.
Here.
Reinhold.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Okay, all present. Next you see the agenda, you're being asked to approve the agenda, if there's any additions, deletions, or motions.
Mr. Supervisor, I just want to see if we can move up 10.1 so the attorney for Pat McGowan can not just sit here through the entire time for this, if that's okay.
Support.
So there's a motion to move unfinished business before public hearing, supported by Jen Chaplin.
Second.
And second, third by Audrey.
Oh, he made the motion.
It's fine, it's fine.
We don't need a third.
All else approved, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed. Next you see the consent agenda, you're being asked to approve the accounts payable of July 10, 2025, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of February 5, 2025, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of June 18, 2025, approve, accept the Building Department Monthly Report of June 2025, and accept the Robinson Capital Quarterly Report ending June 2025.
Mary and Reinhold.
I just, I just have a question, why is there a February 5?
There's a correction to the February 5th Board meeting. We approved $250 for the PDR and also $500 to purchase the land for the PDR Committee. And in the motion, it only said 250, I'm sorry, it said 500, not the 250. So we corrected it, he got his checks, he's fine.
Oh, okay.
It was a little addendum, a little change. Mm-hmm, thank you.
So I'll make the motion approve the consent agenda items, support, supported by Stevenson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed. Moved agenda items, we have none. Comments from the audience, agenda items only. Other than the public hearing items, because we'll have a spot for that. Anything on their new business or unfinished business, if you'd like to address the board, you'll have three minutes, state your name and address. We'll have a section at the end of the meeting about anything non-agenda related. Going once, going twice, okay, thank you. Next is legal counsel.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Next is unfinished business, 10.1, Resolution 2025-09 authorizing the 2025 Capital Improvement Bond, limited tax general obligation. We have Mr. Pat McGowan.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Pat McGowan, I am your bond attorney for Miller Canfield. I've worked, for those of you that don't know me, I've worked with the township on a number of its financing projects over the years. The action item you have before you tonight is the approval of a resolution to authorize a capital improvement bond to pay for a variety of projects that the township has been working on for a while. You've been working on these projects for a long time, and I know that you're familiar with them. The actual bonding process started back in June when you approved a notice of intent indicating the intent to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed $22 million to pay for these various projects. So there are six different items that are going to be included within this bond issue. First is acquiring, constructing, furnishing, equipping a new fire station. Second, the same for a new public works facility. Third, the township share of road and intersection improvements at 30 Mile and M53. Fourth, the township's cost of a new live burn center training facility. Fifth, a new fire truck, and sixth, new ambulance equipment. So as the township has done in the past, the idea was, in terms of efficiencies, to do one single bond issue. At this time, you get some efficiencies from economies of scale issued in the bond market and pay that over time from the various sources of funds for these various projects. So what you have before you tonight is the resolution to authorize the bonds. They would be issued in an amount not to exceed $22 million. I know there's still some numbers coming in and grant funds being applied, but essentially, that's the maximum amount, and the township can reduce that amount between now and the actual sale, based on refining those numbers. So the bonds would be sold at a competitive public sale, as we've done in the past, which means that the township would go out, get bond ratings, have a prospectus prepared, that's called a preliminary official statement, and advertise the sale of the bonds to the bond market. On the day of the sale, we take bids, and whoever gives you the lowest interest cost is who the bonds would be awarded to. So this is a pretty similar process to what we've done with past issues. And we're in the midst of that process. If approved by you tonight, we would be going to the rating agencies in the next several weeks, potentially with a bond sale sometime in August, and a closing roughly three weeks later. So I know several of these projects are underway, the township has the ability to reimburse for some of those costs. And again, this would really kind of be a single bond issue to pay for a variety of those projects. This is the last action item by the board on this topic. So if approved tonight, it essentially authorizes the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer to take the necessary steps to do all those things we talked about, to go get the ratings, to go to the bond market, and sign the necessary documents to authorize and issue the bonds. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the bonds or the resolution itself.
I just have one question, so in terms of numbers, how much are we leveraging? Like, do we have anything to worry about in the future if we needed an emergency situation?
So when you say leveraging, so the nice thing is that the township has significant capacity to issue debt. The township received a very high credit rating. The last time it did a bond issue, we would expect for you to be in that same level. And so really, there's not a concern about not being able to leverage or borrow money for additional projects in the future.
Were we at double A last time?
I think right now it's a double A plus, if I'm not mistaken, which is the second highest rating possible. The only thing higher is triple A, and there's only about a dozen or so communities in the state with a triple A bond rating. So you are at, you know, the second highest level possible for local governments. In fact, I'd say you're higher than the United States of America, because they're no longer rated triple A. So you have a very high credit rating, which reflects, you know, the demographics, economics, management of the township. And that would be reviewed prior to a bond sale, and Standard and Poor's is the rating agency that we've used in the past for the township, and they would issue a report indicating the basis for whatever rating they issue.
And then just to remind the board and the public, we do have the funds to pay for all these projects, but financially, it's a smarter move to borrow a bond, pay it over time, and not deplete our funds. So we've talked about this at the past board and now this current board, so we'd like to move forward with these projects.
That doesn't affect anybody's taxes either.
It doesn't affect anybody's taxes or anything.
And then I remember we talked about if the interest performs better, it actually benefits everyone.
To address that comment, so I know a lot of you are familiar with school bonds, when you have a bond issue and then the school district gets to levy a tax to pay the debt, that is not what this is. This does not authorize you to raise taxes above your existing rates. That can only be accomplished if it's approved by the voters. But we didn't need to do that, because as the supervisor indicated, there's sufficient funds within the township funds and the revenues from the various sources to pay this without having to have a tax increase.
The terms of the bonds are, what, 20 years?
Yeah, so this is going to be a 20-year bond issue. It's roughly level debt service spread across those 20 years.
And is it possible to pay them off early if we wanted to, or not?
It is, the way that usually works, I'm just checking here and see what our maturity schedule is. So typically, when bonds are sold, they are not able to be paid off early in the first 10 years. And the reason is that investors want to know if they buy it, they're going to have it around for a while. So that means that there's an opportunity to refinance at about that 10-year mark, if interest rates are lower. And even if interest rates are the same, usually there's an opportunity to refinance, because now you've only got 10 years left, and so it's going to be lower on the interest curve. So, but if the township did have sufficient funds after that 10 years, it would have the ability to pay down that debt.
Okay, that's normal.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Washington 2025 Capital Improvement Bonds Limited Tax General Obligation.
Support.
You authorize us to sign the resolution 2025-09? Okay, motion by Mylum, seconded by Stevenson, no questions, roll call.
Mylum.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Pravidi.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll go into our public hearing 9.1, Forest Pond's Formal PUD Public Hearing. So I'll ask for a motion to open public hearing.
So moved. Support.
Okay, motion by Chaplin, supported by Stevenson to go into public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed. So I'll call the applicant up, and the, or do I?
Yes, the applicant can make his presentation.
Yeah, please do your presentation, and then we'll have, it's open to the public to kind of... We can get a couple more podiums for you.
I know, we got a big podium.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Delislob with Noack &amp; Fraus, civil engineer in the project. Go through some quick introductions here, so you know who everyone is. project. Go through some quick introductions here so you know who everyone is.
I'm Ben Alway. I'm legal counsel for Mr. Magnoli and his development company.
I'm Mike Magnoli, Michelangelo's Construction.
And what we have on the screen here is our proposed PUD, which is located just south of the Powell Ridge development, which is just south of the high school complex. And just for maybe a better understanding, we've got this view, which might help everybody get their bearings. But we're located right in between Forest Brook, which is that L-shaped subdivision to the south of 28 Mile. And we are just to the south of Powell Ridge there, which you can see partially constructed in this photo. Proposal is for 69 units, varying in size, but between the large lots in Powell Ridge to the north and the smaller lots to the south in Forest Brook. Developer has found an ideal unit size for this area, also satisfying the need for more housing near the school. Facilitates traffic near the school as well with the connection to Powell Ridge and a new connection to 28 Mile. We, understanding the rise and fall of the traffic numbers in Jewel Road on any given school day, we've eliminated any entrance and exit off of Jewel Road from this development to keep all the traffic on 28 Mile. Think that'll alleviate some of the local residents' concerns with just getting on and turning south onto Jewel Road or north if you're on the west side. We've got, as a PUD, large open space areas that you'll see shaded on the left side of the plan, which utilizes an existing pond that you can see right from Jewel Road, which is not shaded. It doesn't count towards our open space, but the six acres, plus or minus of open space that we do have, does include that pond near Jewel Road as well as the pond that's near 28 Mile Road. There is a wetland complex to the south there as well, and we've got a pathway that will take residents in and out of that space, buffering the residents that are on 28 Mile Road from the houses. And then also a connection recommended by your consultant, which we agreed with, to Jewel Road, where we're going to propose a sidewalk path to the north, of course, across our frontage, but the developer has agreed to participate in a future path that will connect our development with Powell Ridge to the north. We will be establishing a solid connection with the sidewalk through the developments as soon as this is constructed. However, that future path out in the public right of way in Jewel would follow. So with these, this quick summary here, we believe we satisfied the eight points required of the PUD. We think it's a good fit for this area. We've got the support of the school in that regard. Mindful of the traffic as well, and we think it just fits in. With that, any questions you might have, we would entertain before the public hearing, or if you'd like to open it up for comment now, it'd be open to that, too.
Yeah, so if there's any questions, I drafted the PUD agreement in conjunction with Ms. Anderson, who's reviewed it. Some highlights just in the PUD agreement, we have delineated in paragraph two, the modifications that we're seeking as part of this. So approximately 16.15 acres of preserved land is open space, a maximum of 69 detached single-family residential units, density of 1.5 single-family residential units per acre, which is a variance from 1.06 units per acre. Its estimated yield is under the A1 zoning, which is an increase of .52 dwellings per acre. The minimum lot area is 11,418 square feet, where the average is 13.905 square feet under the zoning, which is a variance, variance from 40,000 square feet, a reduction up to 20,000 square feet. Minimum lot width, 85 feet, and width, which is a variance from the 120 feet minimum width, a reduction up to 35 feet. Minimum side yard setback, 10 feet and 20 feet, 10 feet for a total of 20, which is a variance of a minimum of 30 with a 60 feet total, which is a reduction up to 20 feet, 40 feet total. Minimum rear yard setback, 40 feet, a variance from the 50 foot, a reduction up to 10 feet. Zero lot trees per lot, that's a Macomb County Department of Roads requirement these days. That's a recent standard. I also want to point out that we believe that we do meet the eight standards for special land use, which is required in your ordinance. We believe that the way that this is laid out, that it is in harmony with the surrounding developments. We have smaller lots, actually, to the south, which is a very popular development, developed by Mr. Magnoli some years ago. And to the north, you have Powell Ridge, which has some larger lots. These lots with the 80-foot width provide a transition. So, you know, and we all know how popular those developments are and are positive. And so also with the exit off 28 Mile, we believe that we've addressed the safety concerns of traffic, that we avoid the congestion off Jewel during the school days. This is something that has been looked at positively, we believe, by your staff, in the way that this exit is off 28 Mile Road. So we believe that this development, in terms of the size of lots, provide a nice transition throughout, you know, moving north from the south side of 28 Mile all the way going north. And it's a nice connection to the school. I think that's one thing that we are really excited about, is that these streets will connect to Powell Ridge. The schoolchildren will have the ability to walk through the subdivision and get to school because there is a pathway within Powell Ridge that connects to the school property. So I know years ago, with some of the old schools, we might have grown up in where the schools were within the subdivision, and you said that little pathway that you get to the school. And that is what is within Powell Ridge. It was a requirement, there's an emergency access road with a gate that will rarely be used, but there's a walkway right next to it. So inside that subdivision, you can connect. Mr. Magnoli is offering, as part of this, and it's in the PUD, it's laid out there, he's of course going to pave the pathways along 28 Mile Road and Jewel, but there are some areas just north of his development where there are no walkways. But he is willing to donate the material to be able to connect that. We don't have control of those easements. It's not our property. It's really not our place to build those, but he's willing, as a public benefit, to donate the cost of the material for that in the future. So hopefully, that will incentivize the township to maybe initiate a gap program to be able to get the easements for that and set up to be constructed, and Mr. Magnoli will donate the material. So we're really excited about this development. If you have any questions about any of the points, I'm here to answer those questions.
I had one, but now I can't find it. It was in... There was a spelling correction on Exhibit C, but now I can't seem to find it on the sheet over here. But maybe it was a misunderstanding on my part, but the spelling corrections remove a variance language. You have that by any chance, Exhibit C?
Exhibit C?
Yep.
So that's noted in the planning letter.
Is it? Okay.
There was a reference to variances. That should be changed to variations, which we had noted, and then a reference to Macomb Township that's outstanding. But those are minor corrections that can be fixed after decision.
Ms. Anderson and I will work that through.
Okay.
No problem.
If authorized by the Board, we'll review the final PUD agreement in Master D to make sure all little things like that are resolved.
Kayla, do you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but could you come up and explain how a PUD works and what's the advantages of having such a program like this versus not having it?
Of course. So I did include a PowerPoint kind of slide deck in your packet, but just to hit a few of the highlights, the reason that the PUD process is in place is really to allow some flexibility in the development standards so that you can get the type of product that you're wanting for a certain area and really fit the site context and location. So it allows a formal process by which the township can waive some of those development requirements in exchange for community benefit. So the main benefits, particular to this application that the Planning Commission identified, were, one, the consistency with nearby development being the 80-foot wide lots in Forest Brook and the 100-foot lots to the north in Palm Ridge, not Palm Ridge, Powell Ridge, thank you. So consistency with the nearby residential development and really that proximity to the school to create that walkable connection. So those are the community benefits in addition to the pathway material that's being proposed. Now, when PUDs come in, there's a really extensive process that they go through. So they start off in the township at the conceptual PUD phase. The Planning Commission gives really preliminary feedback. They don't get into every zoning ordinance standard, but give some feedback on what the major hurdles may be for that application moving forward. The applicant then takes that information. They resubmit a formal PUD application to the Planning Commission. There's a public hearing at the Planning Commission level. There's a chance for revisions. The Planning Commission can make a recommendation either immediately right after that public hearing or at the next meeting. And then, of course, it comes to you all, and there's a second public hearing. So these processes are lengthy, so they can be tough for developers to go through, but again, offer some of that flexibility in negotiation between applicants and the township. Does that answer some of your questions? Is there more I can answer?
Could you explain how it benefits the township in terms of we own, we can have control over the design and everything like that and spaces?
Sure, sure.
Kayla, do we have a slide that's in the packet with the eight, the eight regulations? Is that up there? It must be in there. Do they have it?
It is in your agenda. I can give the full presentation.
No, I'm just saying, no, 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 just the eight items that would help with what Mike is asking. But I don't know if they have that slide.
Yeah, so there's the special land use criteria, but I think separate from that, what the PUD process really does for the township is, again, it allows for that greater level of negotiation between the township and the developer so that we can make recommended changes that we wouldn't otherwise require under ordinance. So again, for example, with Forest Pond's, you know, being the applicant under discussion right now, one of the things that we requested but couldn't require because our ordinance doesn't necessarily require it, is that sidewalk connection between the development itself and that frontage pathway along Jewel Road. And that was really just to get more of that connectivity, that park space and feel where you really can use that active open space in a meaningful way to walk your dog, to walk to school. So we're able to require that extra level of detail. They provided more in the way of open space and landscaping than our ordinance would currently require. So they go a little bit above and beyond in some of those details as well in order to, again, get the township to agree to some of those waivers that they're requesting.
I would like to make a motion, but with discussion. We received correspondence from Mr. Cory Arnold, and I want Mr. Arnold to know, if he's here and the audience are watching, that we take what you said to heart. However, with the background from this particular builder and the product that he puts out, I would make a motion to stick with the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Yeah, we need to open up for public comment.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
I just like, sorry about that.
No, no worries. Any other questions for us at this time?
You don't have to, so just so it's noted that it was presented and it's in the Board packet, if anyone wants to read it, the Boards received this comment.
Mr. Arnold?
Would you like me to read it?
If you want to read it, read it.
This is from Mr. Arnold. Hello, Sam. My name is Cory Arnold. I reside at 61500 Jewel Road. I'm reaching out regarding the Forest Pond's development. After receiving the mailing about the upcoming public hearing, I took some time to review the proposed plans, and I want to share a concern. I was surprised to see the plan includes 69 homes on a 45-acre parcel. According to the Washington Township master plan, the land at the corner of Jewel and 28 is zoned as low density, which is defined as a lot size of no less than 30,000 square feet. But the proposed development appears to be, appears to have average lot sizes of 13,905, 905 square feet, less than half the minimum indicated in the master plan. Given this discrepancy, I'm wondering why this proposal is under consideration. I appreciate your time. Cory Arnold.
John, you're our PC leader. Do you have anything to add from the PC?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. This came through the PC, and it was an interesting discussion. It came out as a split decision. It was four in favor and two against. So it wasn't, it wasn't unanimous decision, but it'd go in favor of the developer. The dissent, since we've heard about the approval, the dissent was all along the lines of this complaint here, is the density of the project. When you look at the overall, you know, it's zoned as A1 right now. So generally, when you're considering what to do with the development, you consider the underlying zoning. But if you look at our master plan, the future land use is talking about an R1A, which is a 40, not a 40,000 square foot lot, but a 30,000 square foot lot. So that's what is in our master plan for the intended future use of this land. Now, when you get with a PUD, we don't necessarily have to follow those guidelines. That's part of the flexibility you get with a PUD. We can, we can vary from those in order to gain a better development. But the comments, I think, that Mr. Miller and I had was, how far are we willing to go down that line? If you looked at Kayla's letter, she had a theoretical, you know, density based on the zoning in the master plan of 44 to 61 units, and this is coming in at 69. I think our concerns were that, you know, we could get the benefits of this development and still stay within our zoning recommendations if we were to lower the density some. So those were the questions we had regarding that. And then over and above that, I think there was some question in regards to the lot sizes, too. I mean, Mr. Magnoli built a beautiful house. We've said that a few times. And these are going to be some very big, very nice houses. When I look at 11,000 or 12,000 square foot lots, I'm concerned that, that, you know, once he's done and he builds a product, and as he stated, he sells a turnkey product, it's done, you buy it, you're done. The people that are moving in in a few years may want more amenities because these are a product that are going to be priced at a fairly high price point. So if they want to add cabanas and pools and things like that, will there be enough room? And I understand that that's something that engineering will identify at some point. So, but that was one of the concerns that was raised. Is there, for the buyer of these houses, is there going to be enough, you know, room for future development on those smaller lots? And I think if I'm not mistaken, you know, I was looking into this, this PUD is the first PUD that Washington will have approved where we have a density in the PUD that's actually higher than the density that we would get through the standard zoning. All of the other ones, the trade-off has been a decrease in density, and now we're actually looking at increase in density. So those were, I think, some of the concerns that were in the against rather than pro.
Mike Kozak, any, unind, engineering side on?
Did you like him to speak to that?
Any comments from you?
As indicated in, I think, our final letter to the Board, as well as all of our letters to the Planning Commission, there's adequate water and sewer capacity to handle the proposed development as shown. Issues related to impervious area, setbacks, improvements in the rear are obviously on individual plot plan bases. But obviously, these lots are larger than what's in Forest Brook to the south. There's adequate outdoor spaces on those, and those have all been developed very successfully. So no concerns there.
Yeah, if we can just speak to that concern, this development is different than a standard development in that instead of giving the homeowner a large lot to maintain, like to the north, which was slower on the uptake and less interest from our buyers, we're putting that into a public open space, park space, that they can all use. That's kind of the model for a lot of areas and preferred by homeowners these days that don't have the time or interest in keeping up half an acre to an acre of land. So the ponds that are there as well, one, we're going to actually make a usable feature. And we're not going to put, you know, any boats on it, but we do envision that being a fishing pond. Mr. Otto that owned the property, talked about doing that. We want to do that. I think that's a nice activity for the residents. We think it's something that we're going to put an aerator, aerator in it as well to keep it clear and also nice when you're driving up and down Jewel Road. It's a nice feature. But the, sure, get this a little bit larger for everybody, but not too. Yeah, during the Planning Commission hearings, we heard that the lots were, you know, too small. We also heard that they were too expensive. Now, there's a suggestion that actually people will want to put more on it than... Now, there's a suggestion that actually people will want to put more on it than what the builder is proposing. Regardless of those concerns, which are identified by the homeowner, you know, the developer has experience having built to the north and to the south. He's built each of those developments and he knows right where he wants to be. And when we originally came forward with this, I think we're at 75 lots or 76 lots, and then working with the consultants, we pared it down. And we put quite a large water feature on the east side, which we don't talk about because we don't get credit for the open space, but it's there. It'll be a nice habitat feature for residents as well, a nice buffer to the, some of the neighbors who I know are here.
Didn't you say the pond wasn't part of your calculation either?
The pond was not a part of that six acres, so, you know, we're basically looking at 10 acres of green, you know, which is just nice and considering that you're adjacent to a school use, a maintenance building that you really don't want to see. So we maintain that tree line that's there, put a buffer between the neighbors that are on 28 Mile and also a little landscape buffer over by the residents that are on the tree.
The HOA will take care of the lake. The HOA will maintain the lake.
Yes, yeah, the association would.
Association.
Yes.
At what point do you think you'd be turning it over to the HOA?
Upon the sale of 35%?
Are there any residents that want to speak on this development, since it's a public hearing? If you do, come to the podium, you get three minutes, state your name and address. Going once, going twice? Oh, yeah.
Name is Dennis Pondo. I live at 12265 28 Mile Road, Washington Township. Okay, I want to know, right now, the speed limit is 55 miles an hour, okay? They come out of that other subdivision over by the power lines, which is Autumn Creek. Well, when they come out, they floor it to get down that dirt road because they know they can go 55. I think all those feelings should be changed. I've been trying to do that. There's a lot of kids around there and these people, they just laugh at you when they drive by or they give you their finger. It happens all the time. And then, on this, the plot map over there, which one is the original pond on 28 Mile Road? Is that going to be like, is there an original and they're going to make another one or they're going to make the whole thing bigger?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Please do.
I'm trying to figure it out.
Sure.
Yeah, our goal is to actually maintain that entire area in its existing condition. Leave the trees, leave the wetland adjacent to the pond, and that's what you see right here.
Well, you got to leave all the cotton trees. That's what's in there. Why don't you clear them out and put some nice trees? That's all cotton trees. I fight that, I fight that every day, month ago. It's all cotton trees. And there's nothing, and if the non-cotton trees, they all fell down because of the ash trees. That whole power line's got all ash trees. They're all down. They're all down. It's, you know, that's just the way it is right now over there. But, yeah. Okay, so that'll be that pond. Now, I live over there, it says A1. Now, when Jim Otto was alive, there was a different setup. There wasn't as many houses, when I was told. And then, is there going to be a creek down there now, still? Is that what the dotted lines are?
So the dash line there is the wetland buffer that Washington Township requires. So that's 25 feet from the boundary of the wetland where there can be no structures built. It has to be maintained as permanent open space.
Okay, so it's going to be from the people's property line, 25 feet to me?
From the wetland is what the dash line is showing.
Well, the wetland is, they're considering right now is where, there's a ditch behind me, okay? And it's all full of frag mites because they dug the other ditch for M1 home, they made it bigger and they disturbed all those frag mites and they brought them all the way down there. Now, the whole thing is full of frag mite. What's going to happen with this? They just keep growing. Are they going to be in there digging the ditch or? That ditch is there now, it's all grown up, you know? It's been there for 50, 60, 70 years. The farmer put, you know, it was in. I mean, what are they going to do there? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, you can talk.
Yeah, you know, they're going to come in and dig. When they dug the one on M1 Homes, they killed all my pine trees again. First, the school killed my oak trees because they wanted to bring dirt from their school and put it where the clay ground was. And one, he came in, he cut them all down. But then they came back and they put a big ditch through there and they hid all the roots again.
Yeah, that was a part of that other project that they completed.
Right.
The highlighted lot is Mr. Pondo's lot. You see he.
Right, that's highlighted, right, yeah.
Yeah, so you, that ditch that is right behind your property and you're very near the property line would be maintained. I don't know that any regrading needs to happen there. We can look at that once we get to that engineering level. But we did a measurement too from your, from your home and just, you know, from your residents to the nearest residents.
Yeah, the ditch has to be deeper because they did their one and they came up, oh, in that ditch, it came up about 50 feet from the corner, you know, the corner of my lot. Well, it's all grown up and it's all like filled up, you know?
Well, there'll be less water going to that ditch.
The frag mites are so bad that they're coming, they start coming into my property, you know? In Washington Township, McComb got them all over and they do spray them or they can maintain them or do something about them. Huh? I don't know, I could carry on, but that's, you know, just like that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments about this project from the audience? We have one in person and one in the board packet that was read. Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to make a comment, if I could, regarding what John, Trustee Chaplin said about people wanting to build more on their property. And I know you've read all this, but, and it's saying the general exceptions are that they, as far as building in their backyards, gazebo, terrace, patios, what have you, cannot project more than 10 feet into the yard. So there is a standard on that. Going into this, whatever they're buying, they know what they're buying. So they're not, if they buy it knowing they can't put more than 10 feet going out, then they can't complain that they can't put a 20-foot deck on because that's what they're buying into. So I think it's all spelled out, right? That's my comment.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the formal, formal approval of Forest Pond's formal PUD approval. Support? Supported by Dennis Stevenson.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may?
Yeah.
Could your motion include and be based on the fact that the Planning Commission reviewed the application and determined that the eight special land use standards were met and that the plan favorably addressed all issues as required by Section 3.17.1C through the zoning ordinances and the requested waivers set forth by the applicant, both in their submission and as spelled out by Mr. Lawyer here tonight, also meet the zoning ordinance.
I said all that. Is that what you said?
You got it right on.
I'll listen to the recording tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion by myself, seconded by Stevenson. If no questions on the motion, as reiterated by our attorney counsel, roll call.
Pravidi.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Mylum.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Chaplin.
No.
Brown, yes, nicely.
My answer is yes, and this gentleman builds a very fine product. I think it'd be first class just like he does the rest of his development, so my vote would be yes.
Okay, so motion passed at six to one. Congratulations both to you and your son on this project. Yeah, thank you. Next is 9.2 public hearing on Washington Creek Formal PUD Public Hearing. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Seconded by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll take that as an aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. So we have representatives here from the Washington Creek PUD Development. This might be awkward. Maybe while they're setting up, maybe Kayla, can you give a little summary of this? I know you, it's in the board packet.
I'll just do it right here.
Sorry.
Yeah, so this one, if you read the review letter, I'm sorry, because it's 20 pages. I know it's thorough. But this, this application first came forward in April 2024. Since there, then, there have been quite a few meetings with the Planning Commission and revisions to these plans. I will note, the Planning Commission made a formal recommendation of denial at its March 2025 meeting on these plans. And that was largely due to findings related to open space areas, you know, lacking required setbacks and overlapping with some of the buffer areas required. And then, density that was inconsistent with surrounding uses in neighborhoods, again, lack of buffering and screening, and then minimal amenities to serve the entire development. However, the applicant, for the purposes of this board meeting, did revise their plans in response to those Planning Commission findings. So notably, they added a 50-foot multifamily building setback from the rear property line to prevent overlapping required landscaped areas. They took a 6% reduction in the number of residential units. So now they're proposing 102 single-family units and 177 multifamily units, 141 of which of those are townhomes. And that, it does fall within your range of density proposed by the master plan, so it's consistent with the future land use categories envisioned for this area. They did add required landscaping at the proposed west entrance to the development and they added usable recreation amenities, which included a pocket park right at the entrance of the single-family portion of the development with future programmable space. They added a playground in the Central Park area and they added a dog park at the rear property line in the multifamily area. So these required extensive changes, again, in response to that Planning Commission recommendation. So this, this is the first development, I think, that has come in recently that features the mix of the multifamily and single-family. So this is, this is kind of a new concept for the Planning Commission to review, and I'll let the applicant speak more to the details.
Has the Planning Commission already reviewed these latest changes?
The Planning Commission has not. So these revised plans were submitted directly to the board after a recommendation was made.
Ready? Go ahead. Yes, sir. Yeah, you can say.
Good evening. My name is Filino Pasqual. I'm a landscape architect. With me here is.
David Dedvukai, Contour Companies.
Greg Izzo, with some engineers.
I think what I'd like to do is start off from describing the property. See. The property is approximately 70 acres. It is located in the northeast quadrant of M53 here and 31 Mile Road. As you can see, this property has a very, very unique shape. The smaller parcel here is approximately 10 acres and the larger parcel here is approximately 60 acres. It is connected by this little small niche area here, which is approximately 60 feet wide. The property abuts M53 here, which is about 1,100 feet. And this portion here is M dot owned. It's, as you can see here, it's very wooded and quite vegetated. It has two drains that bisects it east-west direction here and a wetland drain located here. It has two access point off of 31 Mile Road, which is located here. It's approximately 327 feet. And then, another one here, which is approximately 325 feet. So the site is, the site is currently zoned A1. To the north of this site is industrial, it's own industrial. This is the existing zoning map right here. To the east, it's zone A1 as well. To the south, most of it is zone X A1 with the exception of this industrial site here and R1A here, which is located here. At the corner of this site, which is here, it's zone industrial, industrial. Overlaying the site into the future land use map, you can see that the northern portion of this property is zone multifamily. Along the highway here, the part of that nine acre, 10 acre parcel, as well as a portion of this property, is zone multifamily overlay. And then, the eastern boundary of the property is zone suburban residential. And this, this related future land use map was just recently adopted by the township. So in designing this, we're utilizing the PUD. Part of it is, as Kayla mentioned, the PUD, you know, would provide us some flexibility because of some of the challenges of this site. And under the PUD, we are utilizing the R1AD district and the RM2 requirement to develop our PUD. So, you know, with regards to the Planning Commission denial on our recommendation, I think there were four items there that we felt that kind of hinges that recommendation that we need to address with this revised site plan. And then, one of them is obviously, as she mentioned, density is one. The other one is open space. The other one is the waivers that we were requesting with regards to, you know, some of the building setback and landscaping. And finally, the deficiency in the community benefits that we are providing under the PUD. So, you know, we took a really hard look under our previous plan and this revised plan. We are hopeful that we have addressed all the concerns of the Planning Commission. And so with that revised plan, this is the new plan. So the original plan, as mentioned earlier, is that we had, we are proposing 298 units. This revised plan now has 279 units. Of that, 102 are single-family. And then, the balance, 177 is multifamily right here. Of that multifamily, we are proposing 141 townhouses located here, as well as 36 stack unit buildings, which are here. These are 12-unit buildings right here. With regards to the waiver that we are requesting, this plan here currently complies with both the R1D, single-family, as well as the multifamily R1, I mean, I'm sorry, RM2 requirements, which means that we have provided the 50-foot setback required along this property line and along this property line. All the building setbacks for the multifamily, which is 40 feet side to side, 80 feet rear to rear, we've complied with all these requirements. We're not asking for any waivers at all with regards to these setbacks. With regards to the single-family here, we are proposing, you know, the R1D, our 10,000 square foot lots is the minimum requirement. We are, we are providing the 10,000 square foot lots and in. And in some cases, most of the lots here exceeds those requirements. The typical lot sizes are 70 feet by 143 feet to get the 10,000, which is really, I think, 10,010 square feet. And just talking about briefly about the design. The design is, if you look at this, it's really, when you come in this project, the first thing you hear is this open space right here. As you continue in the single-family, you'll hit another open space park area right here. And then whether you come in through here or you're coming through here, this open space opens up to both the single-family. So one of the comments that they made is that we weren't providing enough open space in the single-family portion. With the multiple family, what you can see here is that the entrance here, when you come down here, you'll hit an open space here, another open space here. And this connection here, the connection to the single-family, is really a requirement that was needed for the fire, for the fire, for requiring two egresses for this development, for the size of this development. So with regards to the density, we've reduced it down. We've not requiring, we're not requesting any waivers for any of the building setback for both the single-family and the multifamily. With regards to the open space, the PUD, under the PUD, the requirement for open space is 15%. That equates to about 10.43 acres. This revised plan here is providing 17% open space. The 17% open space does not include the detention pond, does not include the wetlands, nor does it include the green, the drain here, nor does it include any of the green belt, as well as some of these building setback. And this is illustrated on this plan right here. Any of the green area is what we are counting towards open space area. So I believe that with that, we are in compliance with the township, I mean, the PC's concern regarding open space. The fourth item, I guess, is the deficiency, with the deficiency, the community benefits. Well, under the PUD, you know, we are required to provide the open space. What we've done here is that the community benefits that we are providing are, includes the meandering trails, starting from here, that goes through the backs of these single-family, that connects to these pocket parks through here, and that continues on through the whole entire site. We're providing a dog park located over here. We're providing a place, a place, a place escape area in swing located at the center of this. We are providing a clubhouse facility with a fitness center and a swimming pool. We've also increased our clubhouse facility from, I believe, 2,100 to 200, as requested by the Planning Commission. We've also provided fountain features to enhance, you know, the experience as you go through this open space area. We've provided enhanced entrance features, as you can see over here. And I think even here, we're actually doing quite an elaborate entrance for this project. And we're also providing park benches through the open space areas, decorative streetlights, you know, located at certain locations, like at the entrance, at the intersections, and things, and so forth. We're also providing a pergola feature at the entrance here and a gazebo feature by the dog park area, where people can kind of enjoy watching their dogs run around and so forth. So that's some of the community benefits that we are offering. And the next slide here is the landscape, is the landscape we are providing. In terms of the landscaping, you know, under the PUD, typically, under a straight zoning, a single-family don't always require landscaping to be provided in the street trees, for street trees. So we are providing street trees here. We're providing extensive landscaping through the open space area through here. We're providing the buffer, extensive buffer area between a single-family and the multifamily. We're providing extensive buffer area along this area here, as well along M53 over here. And also, some of the concerns of the Planning Commission was also regarding providing buffer there, which we have done over here. So again, you know, for example, with the green belt, we've enhanced the green belt by, you know, complimenting it, not just two rows of evergreen trees. That's the requirement. But we're also incorporating canopy trees, ornamental trees, shrubs throughout the outside to enhance and give an extensive landscape, you know, product here to really, you know, it's really the icing on the cake for this. To give you an idea how much landscaping we're providing, the number of trees and evergreen trees and ornamental trees that we're providing for this project here is about 1,500, over 1,500 trees. So that kind of gives you how much landscaping we are providing. This next slide here is the waiver we are requesting, the one waiver we are requesting. The one waiver we are requesting is the 20-foot buffer that is required at this pinch point here. Really, it is a hardship because of the limitation of the property. That's the reason why we can't provide the buffer. And trying to get an easement from MDOT is, you know, as you know, is quite challenging. We did reach out to the property owner here to see if we would, if he could provide us with some type of, or allow us to plant. And at this time, he is recommending not to do that. So the next following slides here are some of the single-family elevations that we are proposing. This is the clubhouse facility that we are proposing. This is the townhouse facility we are proposing. And I believe these meet all the standards that is required for the architecturals and the architectural features. Here's a bird's eye view of the development, looking at it from M53, looking east. You can kind of see the open space and the distance between all these houses and the green belt we're providing along here and all the landscaping here, the open space throughout, dog park over here. Here's another bird's eye view of looking at it to the west. M53 over here, the single-family here, there's a pond feature, open space you come into the projects. There's open space here, continue on. There's a park here next to the pond, really facility right here. And a buffer over here, there's a little bit of a, an area. You know, there's quite a bit of distance here from the adjacent property, 143 feet. Next slide here shows a bird's eye view of the community facility. The clubhouse area, the swimming pools. Open space area next to the clubhouse, where, you know, you could have some lawn activities to happen. Here's a view of the play structure, the pocket park that is located at the center next to the clubhouse. This is a view from the single-family, the pond between the single-family, the meandering walk, looking south. Here's another view here of the meandering trails. This is the multifamily. You can see some burmings between the multifamily and the, and the, and the single-family. So again, in summary, the original plan we proposed originally was 298. We are proposing, you know, 297. Out of that, 102 single-family lots, 177 multifamily. In terms of site density, the allowable site density is 382 units. We are providing 279. So with that, the allowable is 5.63 units to the acre. And what we're providing is only 4.11. It's really about more than 100 units less than what's allowed. So with regards to open space, open space required is 15%. We're providing 17% plus. With regards to the zoning, we are aligned with the future land use map that was recently approved. With regards to the community benefits, we are providing, you know, diverse housing options, increased tax base, provides housing stock for future growth for Washington Township. And as well as the community benefit includes the open space that we're providing, which is not, which cannot be achieved or realized under straight zoning. With that open space, we've got a dedicated park and recreational area, which includes a clubhouse facility with swimming pools and fitness center, the meandering trailways that went through the open space, park bench features, just such as the gazebos and the pergolas, pond features, pet switch station, dog park, and the place, play structure and swing. And the extensive landscaping that we're providing really makes this project, you know, I think it's a very, it's a nice-looking project. And we are hoping that you see it. And we're excited about this project. And I think it's a nice-looking project, and we hope that you give us approval to move forward.
No, I just want to mention, the attorney from the township, from Miller Canfield, spoke about how great this town is. And that's why we're here. That's why we keep coming back. We hear it, we see it, and we want to be here. We want this development to move forward. We know there's a housing crunch and need throughout the state. We want to provide different elements of housing, whether it's a higher-end apartment complex for workforce housing and entry-level home for young families, young professionals that want to move into this town. And again, Felino, I think, did a great job in the presentation. We've tried to meet, and we've really tried to exceed expectations from PC. And we've heard you guys, and we're here, standing here again, you know, at your mercy. We're here for, hopefully, an approval and get this development going. Thank you.
Thanks.
So for me, I'm sure it's going to be a beautiful project. But with all this new information that was garnered to us tonight, not to have gone to the Planning Commission, for me, we have these checks and balances and processes that we need to follow. So for me, to even be able to consider a yes, I would have to say, I'd like to see you go back to planning with these new ideas. It sounds wonderful, but it's a whole lot of information that I think falls back on planning. That's just my opinion.
No, I think that's a, that's a fair statement. I'm looking at everything you've added. You've made, you've made some significant changes since the PC has last seen this. This is not a plan that we've denied because we haven't looked at this plan. You know, it's very different than what you submitted last time. And I think they've hit a lot of the things. But I think that the job of the PC with regards to PUD is to make recommendations to the board, you know, as to how to proceed, to do an official review of it. And I think that would probably be the next best step on this. There are some questions I have after seeing this, and I'm on the Planning Commission. So I would, I would need to dig into this deeper to understand the changes they've made. So I would even put that in the form of a motion that...
With all due respect, the public hearing is still open?
Yeah.
So we need to have a public comment before the motion is made.
Okay. Okay, we do that and then have discussion.
First public comment.
All right, well, let's public comment, and then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions. That's a lot of space to be taken care of. Do you have an HOA take care of these facilities? Or how is this going to operate? It's five or 10 years down the road, sometimes the HOAs fall apart. And then how long can it, and then buildings with an empty pool?
Yeah, the multifamily side will be taken care of by our management company, who manages over 5,000 units across the country. The single-family would be HOA in association with, would have bylaws and different components for, you know, protecting the township and the development.
Now, if you're in a multifamily versus a single resident, can you share the amenities together?
So what we have right now on the, on the site itself, we can. What we'd like to do is have the pool house and the amenities for the multifamily stay for the multi-side, different safety concerns, insurance and whatnot. And we would encourage for the residents on their single-family to have, you know, their own pools, but again, share space on-site with the walking trails, the parks, everything that's associated with that.
How would you enforce that?
With bylaws and, you know, different agreements.
I was going to say somebody just can't walk over with...
No, they can walk over. It's a state, to get inside the buildings, you're going to have to have a key fob. You're going to have to have, you know, a resident of the complex. Is there any comments from the audience on this project? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Try to limit it to three minutes, please.
Hello, I'm Tom Geasley. I live at 13515, 31 Mile. I pretty much, I'm on the east side. So... So I line up right along the pool.
You got your own pointer?
And what I am wondering about is the water table. I'm assuming these are all going to have basements. So three feet down, you hit water. So that means they're going to try to build up and drain back to my property line. That's where I'm going. So I'm all the way around, all the way down here. So I don't want to be flooded out. Would that be addressed? Because you guys are putting basements in, correct? And how deep will you be going? Nine-foot basements. And digging down three feet right now hitting water, that means you'll be six feet above the ground if you go right through. The water level is that now, correct?
I don't know if Mike Kozak or Rich can answer that question.
I won't speak to housing, houses and basements and such, except to say that from a drainage standpoint, obviously, any development that occurs in the township, they're responsible for keeping their water on their site. There's significant stormwater management that's in this proposal, as you can see, the ponds that are throughout the site. So the rear lots will be drained and graded to rear yard storm drainage. Those pipes will be routed over to the ponds and then discharged in a controlled manner over time. As far as, there is certainly water in and around this area. There is a high groundwater table. It does vary throughout the area. The township has constructed significant underground water sewer lines through this area and has encountered that. And it does vary in its location. But I won't speak to, obviously, actual building depth. That's out of my depth.
That was one question. And is 31 going to be paved soon? Are they responsible for paving the road as a development or not?
No, they have not stated that they would pave it. That's up to the Macomb County Department of Roads.
Okay. I'm sure, because before it used to be handled that way. If they knew development came in, it wasn't always handled before.
We're not allowed to demand them for state law.
Okay. That was my...
They can offer it, but we can't.
That was my concern, is that. I mean, lot size, used to be large lot was not 70 feet wide. So I mean, that's another thing. Because you're just beating on the 80-foot lot from 85. So 70 seems a little tight. So it seems like you're back in the city again, back in Warren or something.
Paving the road, did you want that done or not done? Or what was your concern about that?
Well, I knew it was supposed to be done before. They're supposed to come all the way around and back to Van Dyke. But it got held up over at the center over there, at the soccer center.
Well, I mean, I know it's kind of off-subject, but Powell Road will be paved later this year from 30 and a half to 32.
Up to 31?
Yep. Well, up to 32, actually.
Okay, so I was straight through.
Yeah, but not 31.
Because I remember before it was proposed, they were supposed to come all the way around, just do a whole loop around there after they put the water.
Yeah, it's on the list, but it never really makes the top under lately.
Okay, that was my concerns and questions. So that's why I make sure I don't get flooded out. And they have a swampland back there, so.
I've talked about it before, but right across the street from this development, pretty much the biggest issue will be density. I mean, when I bought my property, you know, nine years ago, it was roughly half acre to one acre per lot. You know, so if you do the math, at 70 acres, it's 70 homes. Now you're looking at 300 homes. That's a big difference, obviously, huge problem with traffic. I mean, it is a dirt road, like the gentleman was saying. I mean, right now, it's a dust bowl over there with the minimum homes there right now. You got, what, 50 homes at most? So put 300 homes, averaging two cars per home, good luck keeping any houses clean. There's also 82 acres right next door to that, which if this is approved, that'll probably be approved for a similar development. So put another 300 homes on top of that. So I mean, you're just looking at a real cluster, you know, over here, especially when it's a dirt road. With the water table, you can't go below three feet, as the gentleman was saying. I mean, I don't have a basement, I have a crawl space, you know, for that reason. There's no way, you're going to be running subpumps nonstop, and you will have probably water issues with that. So my biggest issue is the density. You know, how do you go from, you know, say 70 to 100 homes on this development to now 300? And now you've got a next-door parcel, if that's going to be, you know, similar, put another 300 homes on top of that. So you've got 600 homes along 31 Mile, that's still a dirt road with no plan to be, you know, paved. You know, so that's not why I moved out here. I moved out here to have a nice country setting. We have 11 acres, and now I'm going to be looking at, you know, 600 neighbors across the street. That's pretty much, I mean, all I got to say, so, you know. No offense to development, you know, development has to go on, I understand that, but there has to be a limit, and I think it's way beyond what should be allowed in that area if you want to keep, you know, this area more of a country setting, you know. It's going to be just a totally different demographic over there, which, you know, it's not what we moved out here for. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Developers aware of the high-water table over there? Were you already aware of that? Okay.
Just to respond to the gentleman's comments regarding the change that's happening, just go back to the master plan. So what I want to point out is that where our development is located is here. This master plan, as you can see, the future, they're planning commercial here, research development here. So this transition from the highway for multifamily and then smaller lots, the R1D here, is really, it makes sense here because of what's going on to the north. Eventually, this road here is going to connect to 32 Mile Road, and, you know, that would liberate some of the traffic. But this is the land use, future land use map of Washington, which is really a high density area here. So I think this, the multifamily next to the highway, transitioning to a lesser use, 74-wide lots, and maybe the next development over might be a little larger lots, you know what I'm saying? And then to the south of you might be larger. I mean, right now, there's, if you look at this existing, there's a set judgment here that's really a, I think, landscape supply place, and then there's industrial here, and then there's also a research technology to the south of this development here. So, and this is recreational area here. So I mean, the site really fits in within the future, you know, master plan of Washington Township. It's just, I wanted to point that out.
Can we address the price point again? What was the price point? Because I saw an entry-level price point, and then I saw something much higher.
The multifamily side will start at $2,200 and up range for rentals, and the single-family will start in the 600s.
So that's affordable housing?
Nowadays, it is. And I don't want, we didn't use the word affordable, more entry-level.
Any other comments from the audience?
Who's this guy?
So as a builder...
Did you bring coffee for everyone?
What's that?
Bring coffee for everyone?
Yeah, for everyone. But as a builder developer, and we own the property to the north of this project, and I'm a citizen of Washington Township now for 25 years, my kids, all my nephews, cannot afford to live here. And the biggest problem we have is we need to look out for the economics of our township, because I want to know who's going to pay all the bills when there's no more homes going up. And we've got to think about this, because there are committees in every city that are addressing this right now. Some of the cities across the country are getting rid of zoning for residential. They're taking single-family lots and making duplex lots out of them right now. Anything to try to create single-family, but in a duplex setting. Because if my children can't afford a house, and my son makes $85,000, right? And his wife wants to be home to take care of the kids, forget it. It's not going to happen. So we have a problem in Michigan, because we are an out state. Nobody comes into the state. We're already losing to other school systems across the country that provide 45-foot lots, a more affordable product. So if my son has to leave town, that's not fair to me. I lose my son. But as a committee, or as a economic foresight of the township, what happens when we lose the schools? So we didn't get Stellantis. Why didn't we get Stellantis landing over here? Because there's no affordable housing for the people that work here, and they already see the school system as being threatened by no one's coming in that's young enough to fill those lower spots. Now, I looked at the school report that just came out. They sent it to me. And if you look at the school report yourself, it shows a downtrend of population, of occupancy for the schools. And I know that when a company looks for, to come into Washington or do any new work, they look for two things: provide housing and provide good education. If you don't have either of those, they don't look, they skip over us. So one, who pays the bills in the township? It's usually the new developments. Or if you don't get the new developments, you have to raise the taxes to afford the increase of cost to maintain the township. So we really got to look at this. This area, I think, is perfect, because again, you're up against a freeway. I've been building for 30 years. Nobody's spending a million dollars on a house that backs up to a freeway, because you can put as many trees as you want, the noise goes right through the trees. You have to have a solid barrier. That's why if you look at the freeways on 696, they put walls up, because that's the only way to stop the noise. Nobody's going to go put walls up along this freeway. So one, we need to provide for all sectors of affordability. We've got big homes areas for big homes. Someone wants to go build a million dollars? No problem. He's saying $600,000. To me, that's expensive. Okay, we're just trying to say that's attainable. Would anyone here go buy a house in this project for $600,000?
Next to the expressway? No.
They're not going to happen. So in reality, let's think about this. You could shrink the house only so much, right? What's the other cost involved in this affordability? It's the lot size. We're paying $12 a lineal foot per lot to develop right now. Price is not coming down. Why? Because in the last recession, we have one pipe company in Michigan now. We used to have four. The one bought the other ones out of business and just jacked its price up. Concrete, we're $200 a yard now. I used to pay, 10 years ago, I used to pay $100 a yard. So cost is not coming down, and if we don't, if we lose the housing, everyone's going to go into a multifamily. We're going to be Europe now, because nobody owns a home in Europe. And that's the direction we're going. So either we accommodate and go to a smaller home, so we can still welcome the youth to come into our township, for how long? And I think that's going to disappear pretty soon, too. Or, and then you guys have to deal with, how do we balance the budget if we don't want to raise taxes? Because that's the only other way to do this. So as a developer, you know, David, myself, will build whatever the market wants. But how do I build something that they can't afford? It's a real big problem. And I suggest that the township maybe pays for a consultant that comes in, that tries to direct the township on how to address these future issues, because if we can't increase the housing to offset some of the increases of cost to run the township, it becomes a problem on the current taxpayers, which nobody wants to pay more taxes. So that's something to address. The school system, you could talk to the school system yourself, you could find out what's going on with the school system. You know, if they close the elementary school and the middle school in the next 10 years because there's no population, they lose all that income. You know, we don't have any housing for the nurse. We don't have housing for the PAs. We don't have housing for the policeman. We don't have a housing for the fireman. They can't afford it. Are they going to go live in Roseville and drive up here every day? You know what they do in Florida? They, in Florida, in any development, they make you put affordable housing for the worker who cuts the grass, who takes care of the house, in the project. Because over there, it's so severe with hurricanes, they don't want to put everyone on the road to drive that far. So they try to strategize how to do that. So over here, we have to start looking at that. Second of all, you know, years ago, there was a big thing where everyone got sued because of the, you know, mobile homes. You cannot prevent a mobile home park from going to your town. Everyone said, oh, we can't have them here. Well, they got sued, and you have to have them in here. This is almost the same thing. If we don't provide for some of the smaller lots, then is someone going to sue us, and we're going to start spending money on trying to defend that? The fight is already before you with the cost. Nobody can afford it. So I think it's so important to go with a smaller lot, go with something a little bit more affordable. This is a perfect project. I think this is a really nice project, and not everyone can be the guy that lives at Bradbury. It's just not going to happen. In terms of your basement flooding, his project's actually going to help you, because all those subpumps that go in is going to suck the water from eight feet and put it into the storm system into the storm sewer. Your land's going to dry up, actually. I've been doing this for way too long, and I used to dig my basements, and I used to set the basement for the grades. You're going to think of it 10 years from now. Thank you. What's that? Yes, it is.
Okay, we got to...
No, it's a storm system.
Kind of cape the three minutes.
Yeah, it'll dry it up. It'll dry it up. But I'll explain to you...
I live right there.
I know, but I've been doing this for 30 years. I built 1,000 homes.
I live near them, but I don't...
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying, my experience, my experience.
Okay, I can't have a debate on the floor like...
Yeah, okay, so...
We've got to wrap.
Yeah, so...
Give you more than three minutes.
I support the project as a builder developer, because we are the ones that people approach to build houses. We see a good need for this. You know, we're not going to get away from the expense, so we have to try to make some adjustments. The only thing is, is you try to build a little smaller. And I don't know, if you all talk to your younger kids, and I'm sure all of your kids don't go outside and pull the weeds, no one paints the house no more, no one wants to help out no more. We used to do that. They don't want to do it. So they don't even, if you could put all concrete in the backyard, no grass, they would put a concrete. So to go a little smaller and have more affordability without the taxes being so high, when I used to build homes years ago, they didn't assess the house for two years later. Now, I put the footings in, they assess it. I put gravel in the basement, they assess it, because you guys need money.
Okay.
Capisce?
Capisce.
Okay, guys.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can I re-comment?
No.
Okay, real quick. Yeah, real quick, since he went over, you can come up. No, come on, come on. Guy come to the mic, though.
Listen, I get that development's not a problem, but you know, you have to take into consider, people moved out here for the big lots. If they wanted to go to a smaller lot size with higher density, they would go to those areas. This is not the area for that. That's why we came out here. If I want a higher density, I'll go to 100 different places. But that's not why we came to Washington. I came for the country feel with, you know, nice city amenities. That's why we're here. So I mean, if I wanted that city life, I'll go somewhere else. So for the people that already bought that and, you know, paid into it heavily, you know, I'm heavily invested into it, now, oh, you know, let's bring 300 homes, 400 homes. Well, there goes my land value, and there goes all my hard work and my investment, you know, so it's not fair to everybody else that's already invested their money into it, so that's my...
Thank you.
Anyone that hasn't spoken wants to speak on this? Otherwise, any other comments from the board?
Mr. Sood?
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to go ahead and make a motion, then, that regarding the formal PUD for Washington Creek, that we hold open the public hearing, and that we refer it back to the planning commission for review and recommendation through the board.
Of this plan?
Of this plan.
We need to close the...
No.
Part of the motion is to keep it open, so when it comes back.
I would recommend you keep it open, so that once it goes back to the planning commission, they make a recommendation, you don't have to re-notice the public hearing. It's just kept open.
Can I ask them one more question before we finish that? I've read all the documents, and you went, you know, four times to the planning commission. You've done a lot of changes as per their request, and that we appreciate that. So why, you were there in March the last time. So why didn't you go back to the, you corrected everything they wanted, so why didn't you go back to them one more time before you came here? I don't understand that.
I guess to answer that question, when we first started this project under the PUD, the PUD, the way we understood it is that there's a little bit of flexibility in terms of some of the regulation. If you look at this layout originally, you will see that the road patterns has not changed. The number of units has changed through the process. But in terms of the road circulation, the patterns, the open space, it hasn't really changed in terms of the design. So when we first went in, we were asking for some waivers, because it's a give and take. You know, there's supposed to be some flexibility with some of the setback requirements and things like that. As we went through the process, it seems like the planning commission wanted us to comply with all these requirements. They're giving us all this, and we haven't really provided. It seems like that they were indicating to us that we haven't provided, that all they've been doing is giving, giving, but they haven't, you know, we've been asking all these variances, but we haven't really provided them with really the amenities that a PUD is supposed to provide. So I mean, with that being said, I mean, even the landscaping plan that we illustrated from previous is quite extensive. The site amenity, aside from the new addition, is really the open space in the single-family, the park area where we added the place structure. That's really significant, and also the loss in the density, because the two things are related: density and open space. You know, you lose density, open space increases. And with regards to the open space, the definition of the open space is a bit vague. We thought we could count some of the rear yard setback. In this case, they made a comment that we shouldn't count that. Well, this adjusted the open space requirement. And again, it did sound like they didn't like the idea of the setback on the building, which kind of changes, you know, some of this. So it's a lot of back and forth, working with the staff, the PC. We had, aside from the planning commission, we even had meetings outside of that, trying to get a resolution so that we can get this, you know, beyond that.
So Clerk Brown, just to answer that question directly, once there was a recommendation made from the planning commission, they couldn't go back to the planning commission without first going to the board. So they needed to go to you to either have, you know, an approval, denial, or kicked back to the planning commission. The only other choice would have been to start all over at conceptual, so that's why we're here.
That's, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So there's a motion by John...
I second, yep.
If any questions on the motion. So the motion's basically to send it back to PC, keep the public hearing open so when they do come back. That layman's term. With that roll call.
So keeping it open, we're not closing it. Keeping it open. Motion by Chaplin.
Have any questions on the motion? So the motion's basically to send them back to PC, keep the public hearing open so when they do come back. That layman's term. With that roll call.
So keeping it open, we're not closing it. Keeping it open. Motion by Chaplin. Second by Milam, correct? Okay. Chaplin?
Yes.
Milam?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. So we'll see you at the next PC meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go into new business. 11.1. I'll let you guys take this.
You want me to get you a water?
I have such a good
Scotch?
You know what? That'll be later. Stupid summer cold.
It's not fair. Is it allergy? Like, did it start? It started with a little bit of a sore throat, and yesterday it was a little bit of wham, an hour.
We used to get to go. Next is 11.1, purchase of township property. The township has some property there at 29 and Van Dyke. This property was purchased way before my time and anyone else's time up here. This was back in 2008. Part of this property was supposed to be a future park, which that's why it says Aikman Park there that Parks and Rec is working on. Developing, that's where I've been proposing to put the splash park. But since then, we've, in the past, we've also received some unsolicited offers. I received an offer to purchase the property that's facing the Van Dyke, just north of the old Rite Aid there. It's 3.695 acres. They're here, I don't know if you wanted to explain what you wanted to purchase her for, or, I don't know.
Mike Magnoli, Michelangelo Construction. We were thinking about purchasing it, putting a Liveworks district in there, which is retail office and condos up top. Something that was more like in the village district, but just north of Rite Aid. We could, you know, participate with your splash pad. But this, the area, we, we've done a few buildings here on Van Dyke, and we've had a lot of success here. We're looking at other properties as well, but this one here really fits the mold for the Liveworks right at that intersection. So that's what we were thinking about. And timing, I mean, I know you're considering water and sewer up there, but I think the project, the price, a lot of times supersedes what, you know, if you held on to it for five years and you bring water and sewer up there, it's going to be worth more, but where's the economy going to be? We're willing to purchase it, you know, we'll write you a check immediately. But then we have to go through planning, and we want to develop another project north, and that's why we're looking at other parcels up there, but this one really fits the mold.
Can you explain that better? What is exactly what you're thinking of doing there?
What does it look like?
Sure. You know where the old Santino's building is? That's, we built that 15 years ago. Got retail in the bottom, office in the middle, condos up top.
Where's that at?
The old Santino's bar, Santino.
Bar Verona.
Bar Verona? Okay.
Yeah. So it's three stories. They do a lot of this in Shelby. It's Liveworks. You know, it's, a lot of times the people that have the retail on the main floor live upstairs, but this would be beautiful in the village district, but there, we've been trying to get parcels, you just can't get it. So I know we're out of the village district, but there's no reason why we can't go, still put that same product up there. It's good for the community. So that's what we were thinking about for this part. And it's deep enough for the parking, if you still wanted to do the splash pad, we'll participate with everything. I mean, like you all know, we, we live here, we have a lot of businesses here, we have a lot of properties, and we're for the community.
Has the property been valued and are you
No, so I spoke with legal counsel, they recommend, obviously, we didn't put this out for bid, number one. Number two, we haven't had it appraised. Our assessor says it's worth way more than this. We've been holding on to this for many years for strategic purposes, I can't really divulge too much on it. We are bringing utilities there, as he stated, so this, there was an offer back in 2016 for $500,000, and the public was really scrutinizing it back then, and this is at $400,000. So that's the history of this property. So I'm kind of in a tough spot personally. If the board does want to sell it, I would recommend we get an appraisal before we put it out to sale.
I would second their recommendation.
We've held on to it for 15 years. I don't want to just let it go for nothing. It's a township asset, we got a
We've had it since 2008.
2008, yes. Or more than 15, yeah, well.
One of the things to consider is the
But I mean, I, I love the project, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, the project sounds, project, yeah. Project sounds great, I just
One of the things we got to consider, too, is the gentleman before us said that if things get out of hand with too much residential, there's nothing else to back it up. So now we got additional business here to try to back that up.
It's going to have condos on top.
Well, true, but also the businesses below for the business tax purposes on
Sure.
So basically, I need a motion from the board, either to approve the sale, deny the sale, or we'll look into it. I don't know what the third option would be.
We get an appraisal and
You can get an appraisal, you'd have to vote for me to get an appraisal, put it out for sale. But financially, we're not in the need to sell either, so I don't. We've talked about this at the last, at least the nine, last nine years I've been on the board, this property, so. And I know we discussed way before that.
Conceptually, the idea sounds awesome.
Yes.
If we could just get the proper value and then potentially put it out to bid.
But there's also strategic issues with the Rite Aid, that this property would benefit and hurt that as well, without saying too much either, so I don't. Just so the board's aware of some of the other obstacles.
But if we don't know what the other project is that you're speaking of, how can we make a decision? But I, I agree that it might be worth more than 400, probably, but how, we don't know what the other issues are in that corner. We don't know. I know you can't say.
I think we'd have to have it appraised before we can even say yes or no.
And again, I've brought this up every, I know you guys have only been through one budget here, but I've talked about this for nine, so it's not
Sure, but now we have the Hoxacre area, and we have your, the other park on 31. So we have other areas for splash pads, I'm saying, or other things. I'm just asking.
Utility wise, not so much, but yeah.
Okay. I'm just wondering.
The other two don't have a sewer to handle that.
But this would be primarily commercial or retail? Would be both?
It's mixed use.
Okay.
Residential up top, retail on the main floor, and offices in the middle.
So they currently have one in downtown Rochester on Main Street. It's very cool.
I, I would suggest, if this is something that the board is interested in, we can work on this a little bit in the background, potentially with the person looking to purchase, to come up with a mutually, you know, satisfactory plan, allowing the township to have some time to think about what they really want on that property.
I think that said, everyone's kind of sitting here trying to decide what we want to do on a new, on something we heard about, you know, this quick. I don't think it, you know, no one seems to be leaping at wanting to sell this property right now, but I do think that our next step probably wouldn't be, wouldn't be a bad idea to authorize the supervisor to get a valuation done on the property, so if at some point we do decide to sell it, we would, we would have a base value determined.
I think that's something we would consider, if the, if the appraisal matches what the offer is, and if the, what you're planning on developing there is something you can present to
Sure.
Planning Commission. It'd be up for consideration. It still might not get a yes, but
Oh, no. Roll the dice every time.
Because what Charles says is perfect, but how do we put that in a motion?
Well, what Charles said is putting a little bit of the cart before the horse. The first step would be to get an appraisal. You would authorize the township supervisor to obtain an appraisal, and then you can go back and see what it's worth, and whether or not you want to go to step two.
Right.
Absolutely.
Then if he wants to go to step two, present something to that.
In, in the meantime, he can certainly work with your staff and your planner to discuss different uses, which kind of starts with step two a little bit.
To, to that point, and I think what your legal counsel is trying to get to is that you can attach like a purchase agreement to this, so that there's a specific plan for that property when you sell it, rather than just selling it on a, you know, based on a conceptual. So we can think through that a little bit.
But first step's an appraisal.
Yes.
And then see if you're willing to pay that.
Sure.
And if you are, then we can go to the next step.
Right. I mean, it's, the money's one thing, but the right project
Right.
That's the key. It's got to be good for me, it's got to be good for you.
Right.
Somebody can come in for a million dollars, they put a photo mat. I mean, is that going to help everybody? So it's got to be the right project on the piece.
Yeah, your, your building by Bar Verona is beautiful.
Thank you.
It's a great building.
Thank you.
So did you make that as a motion?
Charles, is that your motion?
Mm-hmm. I don't know how to put that in words, I
If the board is interested, you can make a motion to authorize the township supervisor to obtain an appraisal of the property.
Okay. I make a motion to authorize the supervisor to get an appraisal on the property? Any question?
Motion by Charles, seconded by John. If any questions? The roll call?
Reinhold?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Pravidi?
No.
Brown?
I've brought this up at the budget workshops and the ones discussed, and now it's
Yes, Brown. Stevenson?
No.
No? And Milam?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll get an appraisal on this property and bring it back to the board.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
11-2, Mike Kozak, Internal Drive San, oh, Mike Kozak to the podium, sorry. 11-2, Internal Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension, Bid Recommendation and Work Authorization. So the Water and Sewer Committee meant to bring this extension off of 29 Mile, I guess we can explain it.
That's correct. So this is to provide sanitary sewer service to the proposed fire station at the corner of 30 and Powell, as well as run it through the existing parcel, the 33 acres that the township still owns there, speaking of land that you own. It's about 1,500 feet of sewer. This was bid out last month, and we opened bids on June 23rd. T.R. Piperzak was the lowest bidder. The only slight hiccup is your bid requirements did require that a USB flash drive was provided with a digital copy of the bid. The low bidder did do that, but it actually was for a different project that they submitted. We had a couple other bidders that didn't submit it at all. Your bid documents are very clear that you reserve the right, when it's in your interest, to waive those requirements. So if you were to approve a motion, it's worded very carefully, I would just recommend that you use the language that we put there. We've discussed this with the Clerk's Office, and actually talked about, maybe in the near future, going to a fully digital bid anyway, simplifying the process so people don't have to run in here and try to beat traffic at 1 o'clock on a Tuesday and hand over a bid and get it stamped. You can simply do all that electronic. It's a very clean process, it gets opened and published immediately.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I make a motion, we did discuss this, if that's okay, I make a motion that the, to approve the project as proposed, a sample motion might be, award of an internal drive sanitary sewer extension to P.R. Piperzak Company in the amount of $244,601.90, with a 10% contingency of $24,460.19 to be managed by the Water and Sewer Committee throughout the project. The hard copy of the bid submitted was accurate and complete for this project. The electronic copies contained incorrect information. The township has elected to waive this requirement and proceed with awarding the bid to T.R. Piperzak Company Inc. Also, approval of construction engineering services for Givhills Webster on the project with a total time and material budget not to exceed $14,076.
Support.
And I'll just add, because, I'll just add, because I didn't mention it. You've, your township has completed multiple projects with Piperzak. They, you currently have your water and sewer project in the area that was mentioned earlier tonight, between 31 and 32 Mile Road, that's just wrapping up. And we've worked with them on numerous projects and had successful completions.
Yeah, I saw that, I was concerned. I like a little bid, but the bid spread was interesting.
Okay, so that's a motion by Brown, seconded by Stevenson. Could you roll call?
Brown, yes. Stevenson?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Milam?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next, again, is the 29 Mile Road Water Main Extension, Work Authorization.
So we'll go back in time, maybe two years or so. ITC, your transmission power provider that has numerous assets in the township, was before the Planning Commission, probably not the board, just the Planning Commission, to construct a substation, what they refer to as the Crimson Substation on the north side of 29 Mile Road west of M53. They acquired a few parcels there to build that station. As a condition of their site plan approval, they needed to extend a road, a service drive, Albert Drive, along, would be the west side of M53, the east side of their parcel. As a part of the construction of that road that they did complete, they also constructed a water main, brand new 16-inch water main that you got 2,500 feet-ish, about a half mile. And the township also completed a small connection point about two years ago that connected that water main to the water main on 30 Mile Road. There's a sketch in your packet that I will attempt to explain, but essentially, you have multiple pressure districts in the township that are primarily due to the elevation difference of about 400 feet from the northwest corner of the township down to the southeast corner, high up northwest, low down in the southeast. So we have to divide up the township into pressure zones, or else we would have to make the water at a pressure too high and blow up people's plumbing in one area just to serve the other area, right? So we have dividing lines. That's accomplished using a combination of booster stations that are located throughout the township to boost that pressure up to serve those higher elevation areas. And then we have pressure-reducing valve stations to help reduce the pressure down and protect the ones on the low side. By constructing the water main along Albert Drive with the ITC project, the low-pressure and the medium-pressure districts became connected. That's a bad thing, because when you now make a connection to a building or a home, you can blow up their plumbing, essentially. So we got a bunch of free water main through an ITC project, it's a great thing. We got to build a small section on 29 Mile Road to parallel another main that's already there and help redefine that boundary and make everything connected. We have a valve closed right now, so those two districts don't mix, so the, it's not an immediate emergency. But obviously, we don't like to have valves closed throughout the township where pipes should be connected. That's the whole point of water main, is that it's looped and redundant. So when something breaks, we do close a valve in an emergency situation, and we can still serve everybody else. So this will build about 400 feet, sound right? About 400 feet along the north side of 29 Mile Road. We got to get a few easements to do that. We have some potential wetlands in that area, so a little bit tricky there, but besides that, it's a pretty standard water main project. Estimated total cost is about $390,000. Again, you got millions of dollars of free water main out of this deal. This is a good price to pay to make everything connected and keep your system working the way it's supposed to be. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike, how's this going to affect the sub, the station at 26 Mile Road, when they're going to reconstruct it or redesign? Is that going to have any effects on it, any at all?
Which station? I'm sorry.
The Green Monster there that's on
Green Monster.
26
This, Mike, this is fresh water. No, this is
You're talking about on Jewel Road?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Different systems, we don't like to connect them. Yep. So nothing to do with sanitary sewer system, this is pure drinking water. Yep.
Just one question on this, Mike.
Yes.
Looking at your beautiful drawing.
Thanks.
Love the shades of blue. You've got it mapped out to the far side of the street, and you said we've got to get easements to run it through there. Is there any reason why we don't put that on the south side and just run a parallel line next to the other one where we've got the existing main?
Just the difficulty of construction, when we get all the way over here and to connect into where that PRV is, there's just not enough physical space to make it work.
Okay.
Because we'd have to cross back around the far side of it. It just gets really difficult with how many pipes are there. That is the PRV, and this probably predates all of you guys, that when it broke about, Mike was here, I think, when it broke about eight, nine years ago, the whole station came out of the ground and rotated up because the pressure was so great. So infrastructure can be scary sometimes, but that's just a side note. I just thought that was a pretty crazy thing when it happened.
Do that again.
We're going to make sure that doesn't happen.
All right, then I would, let's see, make a motion that we approve the work authorization for Givhills Webster to provide professional surveying geotechnical environmental design, bidding and easement services for the proposed 29-mile water main extension for a total fee not to exceed $64,411.
Okay, that's a motion by Chaplin, supported by Stevenson. No questions, roll call.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Pervidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Brown, yes. Mylum?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 11-4 miscellaneous ordinance text amendments. So our planning and zoning has been working on updating and organizing and cleaning up.
All sorts of fun stuff. This is our third set of zoning ordinance amendments, I think that's in front of you this year. This one is just miscellaneous cleanup, so it's a whole bunch of items that kind of got put into this one lump update. Key thing here, we added definitions that were missing from your zoning ordinance. So there were some use definitions that had come up during plan reviews, where we just wanted that extra clarification in the ordinance. We're also adding a definition for open space that would then apply across your different development types. Currently in the zoning ordinance, the only open space definition is in the residential open space development category, which very few developers use ever, and it's very difficult to then apply that definition to other types of development. So we wanted to standardize that across the board. In kind of just conjunction with that, we made some updates to the permitted and special land uses, just to be consistent with the language that we put in the definitions, and also to bring in some of the ordinance amendments that were done previously but hadn't kind of come full circle to make their way into these lists of uses. So outdoor seating areas, for example, you had already adopted amendments related to allowing outdoor seating areas, but we haven't actually gone back and put them in the lists. So those things are included. I'm going to skip ahead a lot of pages, because that is the majority of this packet. Give me just a sec here. So if you go to page 13, this is where we get back into some of the substantive changes. Residential open space development, I referenced, this contained your only definition for open space, so the change here is just to remove the definition from that section and put it back into the definitions. We removed a reference to trail connections in the Macomb Orchard Trail for any property that's abutting the trail, because the Macomb County has asked us not to do that. They don't actually want all of those connections, because it's new conflict points where bicyclists are going by on this bike highway on the Macomb Orchard Trail, and if we have too many connections in, then there's pedestrians that are potentially being hit by those bicyclists, et cetera. So reflected that based on that county request. We added some clarifying standards for full and self-service car washes, mostly pertaining to a standard that said ingress and egress from a car wash can only be on a major thoroughfare. There was only one property within all of the industrial district, or sorry, general commercial district, that didn't have that access onto a major thoroughfare. So we felt that that was kind of an undue burden, and we opened that up to major and secondary thoroughfare, so only affecting that one property. And then clarified some of the landscaping requirements there as well. Garage and yard sales, the only change there was just to reference the sign ordinance that you all just adopted, so that there's not a separate provision specific to garage and yard sale signs, which if you were paying attention to my last presentation, you know would be not content neutral. And then finally, we added a whole new set of standards specific to self-service storage and self-storage warehouses. There were no specific use standards for those uses in your ordinance, and we felt that those were important, especially as that's a growing use across the nation. Any questions for me?
Well, I make a motion, if that's okay, make a motion to request approval and adoption of a miscellaneous ordinance text amendments as presented. This comes before you for a final decision with unanimous recommendation of approving from the Planning Commission at the June 12, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion by Brown, supported by Mylum. No questions, roll call.
Brown, yes. Mylum?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Pervidi?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is 11-5 DPW lawnmower purchase. As we begin the growth of our new DPW building, to better handle our growing community here. Rich was looking into buying the lawnmower.
I made it. We went and priced, tried to get a new zero-turn lawnmower. You see four prices on there. We did pick the highest price. The second one that we were looking at was the same thing that we have now. The reason that we picked the higher price, we like the warranty that we get from HellaBucks, we like the service we get from HellaBucks, and it's a bigger engine that we have to go to a bigger, we want to use a bigger lawnmower. Now, the Toro was our second pick. That's exactly what we have now, we've had for 11 years. So we just thought that it's time to go for a little bit bigger. We're cutting 34 acres over here off of 30 Mile Road. We're cutting bigger areas now. That's the only reason I can give you for the $3,000 increase. We just, the warranty's better, it's a better warranty on the engine hours.
It'll help us be not so dependent on outside services. We can handle stuff now in-house.
And all four of them fit on our trailers, any one of the four.
Rich, this quote is April 29 of this year. Do you know if this price is still valid?
It's still valid.
Good job on the Gravely. It's a workhorse. I love their equipment. I've had one for 15 years for my property, and yeah, I would highly recommend that they go with that. It's a good commercial piece of equipment. So with that said, I would make a motion that we authorize a DPW to purchase the Gravely Pro-Turn 516-inch mower, and I'm looking for the amount here.
13,182.
In the amount of 13,182.97.
Does that include tax and everything?
Everything.
Sure, okay. I mean, I don't want to...
No tax.
It does.
Better than me, no tax.
Well, I mean, I meant any miscellaneous, we shouldn't say tax.
That's everything.
Any shipping charges or anything?
And it's in...
But I mean, he's saying shipping, it's all in there.
And it's in stack.
It's all on there.
Any surprise miscellaneous costs?
Support his motion?
Either way.
Okay. So motion by Chaplin, supported by Stevenson, if no questions, mine's been answered. Roll call.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Mylum?
Yes.
Pervidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Brown, yes.
Thank you.
What was the number?
Thanks, Rich. Next is 11-6, a consent judgment committee has met to talk about a proposed amendment for 5757 Cusick Lake Drive. I think you need to ask to be recused.
What?
You need to ask the board to be recused for this one.
I'm, would request to be recused from this one.
Okay, make a motion that Charles Beal wanted to recuse himself from this vote.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. So this will be a six-man vote. I don't know, should we wait for them?
Yeah.
He'll be right back.
What was the number on the lawnmower? There were three different prices here. What was it, John?
The Q-Buck.
I want to reach this one here. Got it.
We'll have Christine Anderson explain the consent judgment.
This comes before you, based on the recommendation of the consent judgment committee. As this board is well aware, this matter was very emotionally charged when it was pending back before the ZBA and before Judge Gotti. And I am confident that all the board members are very familiar with the original consent judgment terms that provided the property owner could maintain 35% of impervious surface coverage on his lot, which lot is just over one acre in size. At that time, the zoning ordinance provided that such properties could only have 30% of impervious surface. Since the entry of the original consent judgment, the township zoning ordinance, after much discussion and research by the Planning Commission, has increased the amount of impervious surface allowed on parcels within the township. The property owner at this time is requesting to be allowed to have 37% impervious surface coverage, which is still less than what was originally there. He's also asking that if the zoning ordinance changes, and that coverage is allowed, does go up, he's allowed to have more, that he allowed to do that without coming back to the township board. The property owner is still required to obtain all necessary permits and approvals and inspections, just like anybody else. And whether or not to amend the consent judgment is completely up to the township board. You have full discretion.
It seems like a no-brainer, because it's what our current status is, right? So I make a motion to support...
To approve the...
To approve the amendment. The amendment as written, in addition to not having him have to come back to the board if our status changes.
That is in the amendment.
Okay.
So should we...
Was there a second?
Should it be exact? Okay.
Are we good on the motion?
I need a second.
Second?
Okay, so that's a motion by Mylum, supported by Chaplin. Any questions otherwise? Roll call.
Mylum?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Brown, yes. Pervidi?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that it's approved 6-0. Thank you. Charles, you're back on the board. Back on the board again.
You're unrecused.
Next is item 12. That's next, comments from the audience now. So item 12 is comments from the audience on anything, agenda or non-agenda. You've got three minutes. State your name and address.
My name is John Brothers. Address is 5715 Cusick Lake Drive. My question is, is the proposed changes to Charles's property, where would these be done at? And also, since Mr. Nicely, or Mr. Kozak wasn't at the last meeting that I was at, I would like to ask him publicly, because Mr. Pervidi said that Charles Reinhold was retaining his water. I guess, Mr. Kozak, is Charles Reinhold containing his water from entering my property?
This is comment, not a debate. You've got a minute.
Well, you know what, I'm just saying, I have damage now going on to my property, and I have two civil engineers, and we're going to be having to seek, unfortunately, going into court with this now, because, you know, this has been ignored by the township board, and Mr. Kozak's report was incomplete. He never did say, or did not say, he was retaining his water. Now I have damage now, and I have, you know, physical proof of it. So my concern is, with the impervious surface being increased, how much water, how much more damage is going to get down to my property, Charles? So debate or not, I've been up in front of this board multiple times, I've had my attorney in front of it multiple times, I've got civil engineers in front of me.
And we've stated it's a civil case numerous times.
Yeah, well, so, and you guys have ignored it multiple times, so...
We don't get involved in civil cases.
Not a big deal, right, Mr. Pervidi? No big deal, right?
We don't get involved in neighbor disputes. We don't get involved.
Well, you're the ones that approved, and there's, in the consent judgment, you were supposed to...
You have one minute left.
You were supposed to verify whether he's retaining his water or not. So I'm asking, is he or is he not?
He's passed off his permits.
Yeah, all his permits and everything's been applied, I don't...
I'm not asking that. The report that was submitted by Mr. Kozak was incomplete, it never did say, besides that there would be a small amount of water being left in the front of the property. So this is my concern. So we're just going to ignore it like we did the last four times I was up here? Is that what we're going to do? Yes?
You've got 30 seconds.
No, I'm asking a question. We're going to be in court, I understand that, but we're going to be in court here very soon because of your lack of action. So is that...
That's fine. Again, this is a civil case, not a township case.
But you have an obligation to enforce the judgment. It's written in the judgment. You have an obligation to do this. You have not done it.
Maybe we should refer to our legal counsel that's here right now.
Mr. Supervisor, to my knowledge, all the provisions of the consent judgment have been satisfied. This township board went over and above and authorized additional inspections by your township engineer, additional reports. To my knowledge, there is nothing outstanding with respect to this parcel.
So, Ms. Anderson, you're saying then that everything has been complied with and everything is fine, is what you're saying then, true?
I'm saying, to my knowledge, all provisions of consent judgment have been complied with, yes.
Okay, so everyone else is agreeing then, right, Mr. Kozak?
Okay, thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
That's it, huh?
Any other comments?
I'd be embarrassed if I was you, Charles, to be honest with you, that you haven't addressed this. I'm trying to get this addressed.
You have not.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
You've made no effort.
Is there any other comments going once? Going twice?
To yourself.
Okay, public comment is closed. Next is elected officials update community announcements. August 7 is our Purple Heart event at the Washington Township Memorial. Everyone is welcome to come, it's at 11:00 a.m. I'd like to make a sad announcement. Susan Hayes, a former member of our Board of Review and Planning Commission, has passed away a couple weeks ago. It just came to our, I was just notified today of it. So we extend our condolences to the Hayes family.
I think we should talk about Ron Rosell, too. He's served our community a long time. Ron Rosell passed away.
Yeah, also, in our neighboring community, Romeo. Romeo, former councilman, Ron Rosell, passed away two nights ago. His services will be on Monday night at Monberg Funeral Home, and the funeral's Tuesday, so I extend my condolences to the Rosell family as well, and pro alice service to our neighboring community in Romeo and the tri-community area here. Oh, yeah. So we have a public event on August 19. That's Priority Waste will be here all day from 8:00 to 5:00 to answer any billing questions if any resident has. Please come in, we're going to set up the boardroom here. There'll be representatives from Priority Waste if you have any billing issues. From our last discussion with them last year, they're going to be giving us any delinquent billing a month ahead of time than normal, so we're trying to get this before they do roll into the taxes. So please check your Priority Waste account. If you haven't paid, please pay, otherwise it will fall into your December 1 tax bill or come August 19, and you can speak live to them. You don't have to call, you don't have to email, you can just stop on in between 8:00 and 5:00 and meet with a representative to discuss your account.
And speaking of, and that is good, and they are making an effort in Washington Township to, you probably are aware that the Macomb Township put Priority Waste in default on July 9. They gave them, July 9, and gave them 30 days to cure, or they will find another waste hauler. Sterling Heights also put them in default on June 25, and they've been fined $60,000 so far for non-trash pickups. So while Priority is trying to do better in our community, they're having problems in other communities. So I'm curious what safeguards we have, should they, you know, if they're diverting trucks to other communities that are in default with, and our service gets worse, I just wonder what would happen with us.
I wonder if it floods tonight, what's going to happen.
What? I'm just, no, I'm just saying, they're having problems in other places, so...
But we have the provisions in our...
Yeah, in our contracts. You have to be mindful of that.
Terms of the contract must be complied with, and if they're not, then they will be in default, then you can do the same thing, send them an notice to cure. Absolutely.
I'm very confident, working with the management there, that it's solved. We're going to move forward. I'm sorry, are we done, Ms. Brown or Court Brown?
I'm sorry?
Are we done?
We are done.
No, did you have...
He asked if you were done.
I'm good. Yeah, thank you.
Just a public aware, stamps went up again. They're now 78 cents, up from 73 cents. I encourage everybody to pay your bills online. You can sign up for automatic draft for water bill. You're drafted on the 6th of the month, it'll be due on the 10th of the month. It saves you the postage time, and who knows if it's going to go up again. So please, if you want to take advantage of it, let us know in the Treasury Department. Unfortunately, you cannot pay your taxes bi-monthly, but you can make one-time payments online if you choose to do so, or multiple payments up to the due date for the taxes. Considering that postage is continuing going up, this is a free service for all the residents to have the automatic draft for water bills, please take advantage of it, so it helps keep your costs down a little bit more.
For the upcoming month of August, the Planning Commission meeting will be canceled this month. There's been no applications for August. ZBA will also be canceled this month again and August coming up. There's no applications as well. Any other announcements?
It looks like you've got a question, Audrey.
I do, but I thought we were going to send them back to the Planning Commission, but there's no meeting?
No, no.
Or they have to register for it.
I'm sorry?
They have to apply to be on the...
They've got to get on the agenda.
To get on the agenda.
Yeah, that's how it works.
The submission cutoff has already passed.
Okay.
What time's the National Day of Purse?
Purple Hearts, August 7.[1681.51] Purple Heart's August 7.
August 7, okay. What time?
I love it. Also, Kelly Lovati was here, August 15 is the state of the township, it'll be held at Jack Frost Museum, so I'm excited about that, that's at 12 o'clock. If you're interested in attending, please go to the Macomb County Chamber of Commerce website, and you can secure your tickets there.
And also, I forgot to say, August 9, on Saturday, we're having our, I forgot about that, sorry, our, the hazardous waste recycling, yes, and paper shredding Saturday, August 9, from 8 to 12 p.m., well, AM to PM. You know what I meant?
No electronics.
No electronics.
Yeah, paper electronics is in September, this is just hazardous.
This is hazardous waste.
If you come around 10 a.m., it's a little bit quieter.
Shredding. Thank you.
Okay, then, I need, we have no correspondence, the only one we had was in the public. Hearing, hearing nothing, I make a motion adjourned?
Second. Support.
Everybody, all in favor?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, thank you, WBRRW, have a good night.